I took all the backroads today because any was packed up and I got here at five to five. I said, I get here faster taking the backroads. Who knew?
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and start us, okay? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Will County Planning and Zoning Commission, regular PCC Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of November 18th. And I call this meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director, would you lead us to the pledge, please?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
You step in?
Here.
Here.
Steve Mitchell?
Here.
Darren Warren here, and Louis Navarre.
We only have four committee members here today. It takes all four to pass. So if any one committee member votes against a case, the case will fail. We have one committee member here today who has personal business with two of the cases, so he's going to recuse himself on case number one, ZZ25086, and case number three, ZC25099. So we're gonna have to postpone those two cases until the next, next meeting?
December 2nd.
December 2nd. So anyone who was interested in those two meetings, we're not gonna hear them tonight. I'm sorry about that. We're gonna hear them on December 2nd. So we'll call for a postponement in a minute. And, uh, make it technically legal.
Excuse me, Commissioner? Um, yeah, so I'm looking at December 2nd, our agenda right now, and it is full. However, December 16th is not, so I am requesting that we could postpone 086 and 099 to December 16th.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
And Commissioner, we would need a motion to approve that?
Yeah, we know that. We're, we're still, I'm still in the explanation phase. Everyone who is here tonight and is going to speak, I'm going to swear you in en masse. So please raise your right hands if you're speaking and say, "I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, oh my God, I do." I didn't hear "I do's." Thank you. And one more thing, everyone who has a cell phone, please either turn it down, put it in airplane mode, or turn it off. Thank you very much. Now, going back into the regular minutes of the meeting, uh, we're gonna make the approval of the minutes for public hearing November 4th. Every runner, I presume, has had a chance to read them, so I would like a motion to approve the minute.
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay. Now, we're coming to our two cases, and we'll do them one at a time. Case ZZ-25-086. I ask for a motion for a postponement to December 16th.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So I have a roll call vote, please.
John Heatherton?
Yes.
Roger Battenhausen?
Yes.
Yeah, Chairman Hughes.
Yes. Next case is, the third case on our agenda is ZZ-25-099. I'd also like a motion to postpone that to December 16th.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
John Heatherton?
Yes.
Roger Battenhausen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So our first case tonight will be ZZ-25-096. And, um, let me take these cases and move them. And that case is, uh, done by Marguerite Kenny. Is it gonna be presented by Marguerite Kenny? Yes, it is.
Good evening. Um, so zoning case ZZ25096 takes place in New Lennox Township. The property is 700 Illinois Highway in New Lennox. The applicant and owner are, um, Victoria Mantusick, Richard Anagonos, and Kathleen Anagonos. And the applicant is here tonight requesting, uh, three variances to hopefully build an addition onto their animal confinement structure and bring the property into compliance. So on the screen, I have the zoning map. Um, you can see the surrounding properties. We have, um, R2 to the north and R1 within the Village of New Lennox to the south, as well as to the west. And then to the east, we have A1 within unincorporated Bull County. Um, so you can see between the two zoning maps, the Village of New Lennox zoning map is on the left and the county's is on the right. Um, the property is located on the south side of Illinois Highway, as you can see, and it's over a quarter mile west of Spencer Road. Um, per mapping and plating records, this property was created on October 23rd, 1978, after which the county adopted its 1978 zoning ordinance, which stipulated that A1 parcels had to meet a minimum requirement of 10 acres with 300 feet of frontage. The subject property is only 5.02 acres and has 272 feet of lot frontage. Uh, so the applicant is pursuing the two variances to bring the lot standards into compliance. Um, the property is also within the Village of New Lennox's facility planning area, and you can see that the village limits above this property. I have the aerial on the screen. Um, this is not as updated as what actually exists on the property, but this was taken earlier this year. Um, they actually have the stable already constructed on site. You can sort of see the building footprint. Um, the next slide will show the, uh, platte survey and the site plan. So this property has a very minimal flood zone on the property. You can see by the light blue shading on the south corner of the property. Um, the property, or the applicant purchased the property in 2024, already improved with a single-family residence. And early last year, they got, um, a permit to build a 104 by 36 pole building that would be 60 feet from the western property line. And in terms of ag exempt, this property would be, uh, able to get an ag exempt permit because it is over five acres. It is zoned A1. Um, and they would only have to show that they met setbacks, which is why the permit was issued, rather than, um, the lot standards having to be in compliance. So the applicant is here, they are wishing to expand that stable, um, with an additional 60 by 160-foot addition to the south of the property and maintaining their eastern building line, um, which causes the building to encroach to the western property line and be 32 feet from that property line. So they are coming forward requesting that variance for that western setback. And the platte survey on the screen, you can see that just because the building is built on an angle and not parallel to that western property line, the addition's actually going to be encroaching into that 50-foot animal confinement setback. So looking at some views of the property, this is looking south at the subject property. This is looking south along that western property line, and you can see the building constructed in the back. And then zooming in on this structure, you can see that pole building builds and the proposed stable is going to be behind that. And then this is looking, uh, west and east along Illinois Highway. This is looking north across Illinois Highway. In terms of the criteria that variances are evaluated upon, um, the first criterion, I can briefly explain. An in-depth analysis is in the staff report, but staff finds that the owner's plight is due to unique circumstances regarding the variances for lot area and frontage. The applicant did not create this parcel. They purchased it as configured in 2024. Um, and the county issued a permit for a swimming pool despite the lot deficiencies earlier this year, which should have triggered, um, the variances for lot frontage and lot area. Um, so they are coming into compliance with the request with this, um, setback as well. Staff finds that if the variances are granted, it would likely not alter the essential character of the locality. There are four other pins in the immediate area, also zoned A1, that are deficient for A1 standards. And these are the A1 parcels that are directly east of this property. Um, this parcel's the only one that's improved among the deficient A1 lots. Regarding the variance for the animal confinement setbacks, staff finds that the owner's plight is not due to unique circumstances. It's based upon personal preference. And the applicant wishes to build the stable, the addition closer to the western property line to maintain a consistent eastern building line of the existing building, rather than have a weird, uh, configuration and meet the setback. Um, staff finds that if the variance is granted, it would likely not alter the essential character of the locality. There are four A2 parcels to the west on the other side of the church property within the Village of New Lennox that's unincorporated, that contain structures that encroach closer to the, than what is requested with 32 feet. Um, the A2 district has the same animal confinement setback standards as the A1 district, which is 50 feet. Moving on to criterion number two, um, regarding the variances for lot area and frontage, the other A1 parcels, again to the east, consist of flag lots and parcels of similar size as the subject parcel. So the applicant's unable to acquire additional frontage, um, that would benefit them without negatively impacting, uh, adjacent neighbors. Uh, staff finds that the conditions upon these variances is applicable to the similar parcels adjacent to it. Um, the county has many deficient A1 parcels that have been divided by deed over the years, where they don't necessarily come through the land use department to verify lot standards. Um, in terms of criterion number C, staff finds the purpose of the variance is to bring the parcel into compliance and the hardship was not created by the property owner. Um, regarding the variance for animal confinement, uh, staff finds there's adequate space to locate the stable addition to meet the required 50-foot setback. Um, there are five acres or greater in the area qualify for ag exempt permits, um, provided that, you know, the structure meets A1 setbacks, but the desire is to build into a setback. And staff finds the purpose of the variance is add, is, um, to add on to an existing stable which is permitted use. So in terms of, um, it's not exclusively upon a desire to make more money out of the property. However, staff also finds that the hardship is self-created as the applicant is pushing it into a setback. And with animal confinement setbacks, the county wanted to protect the adjacent property owners with the fact that you have farm animals. A lot of times you get odors and noise, and the further the structures can be, um, it does help the neighbors mitigate and not have to deal with those types of things. The church to the west may experience odors and noises just because it's closer to their property. Um, of the agencies notified, staff did not receive any objections. Staff is recommending approval for lot area and frontage, but denial of the animal confinement structure or setback. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Briefly take us back to the, uh, platte survey that shows the addition. I understood you right then. So the original building's slightly angled?
Yes.
So
So the yellow outline is the proposed.
Closer than at the top, is that?
Correct.
But the top is still not with it, not 50 feet away, probably, is it?
It's 60 feet. So the southern corner, um,
I mean, the top of the yellow, the addition?
Right. That would most likely not be 50 feet.
Okay, right. So the whole addition, but you're right. It does get closer. Right, well, keep, as you stated, the original building was 50 foot from the lot line.
Yes.
I'm assuming you meant exactly 50 or thereabouts.
The platte is reading at 60.
Okay.
So they have 10 feet to give or take. But since it's not following that property line parallel, um, it's going to encroach at the closest corner.
And that is why you're denying on the third one, they could easily shift the building 50 feet farther to the east, basically line up the west walls rather than the east walls. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I just, one thing, Marguerite. You had mentioned, uh, one of the reasons the county objects to that 35 feet would be because of odor and nuisance for the adjacent property owners. I, that 18 feet is gonna make a difference in that regard?
I mean, in terms of, you know, complaints, we've had complaints in the past for properties that had structures closer to property lines. Um, I believe that's why the county board adopted the 50-foot confinement setback, mainly to give enough space for the neighbors to have adequate air between the structures that have animal confinement and their property.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any, uh, concerned citizens or objector citizens case out tonight? No concerned citizens or objectors? Okay. May I hear from the property owners or their, uh, speaker if they have a person that they want to represent them? Yes? Okay, would you come down, please? Please give your name for the records.
Uh, Victoria Mantusick, one of the property owners.
Okay. Um, Victoria, if I may call you such, the question we have for you is why are you preferring to move this building in line? Makes it closer to your neighbor's property, then?
Um, we were hoping to put the building, um, shifted to the west, um, for two reasons. One, there is runouts for the, the existing pole barn. There will be runouts where horses will be going in and out of their stalls from the building, and we would prefer them not to be able to potentially kick the building. So if we shift it over, they don't have access to doing that. Um, secondly, um, as you see in the one picture, we put in like a gravel road to go back. It would be easier for any type of truck to, it would be, the secondary pole barn that we want to add in would be a riding arena for the horses. Um, so it would be easier for a truck to pull straight and back in, um, to fill sand or dirt than to have to try and turn in order to get into the building. So that was the reason why we wanted to shift it over.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no objectors or concerned citizens here. So I'm asking for a motion on case ZC-25096 at all.
Mr. Chairman, given that there's nobody from the public to object, ZC-25-096 be 25-134, approval variance for lot area from 10 acres to 5.02 acres.
Second.
I have a motion second, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Same case 096, Mr. Chairman. Item number two, variance 25-135, approval for the variance for lot frontage from 300 feet to 272 feet.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And same case 096, item three, approval for variance 25-136, variance for animal confinement setback western from 50 feet to 32 feet.
Second.
I have a motion second, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.
I would thank thy neighbor for not objecting.
Yes, right, thank your neighbors for not objecting. Don't take care of you. Our next case, our next case tonight will be ZC-25-104 slash M-25-016. And Marguerite Kenny will be our presenter.
Hello again. So this zoning case, ZC-25104, takes place in Homer Township. The property address is 13737 South Archer Avenue in Lamont. The owner and applicant is Christopher L. Johnson, 2006 Living Trust, where Christopher Johnson and Claudia M. Johnson are the co-trustees. And the applicant is here tonight requesting a map amendment from R2 to C3 to allow the existing vet clinic operating on the adjacent eastern parcel to expand onto the subject property. So I have the aerial on the screen. We have the village of Homer Glen is approximately 680 feet to the south of the subject property. Lockport is about a quarter mile to the west. Lamont is 850 feet to the northeast, and Romeoville is about one and a half miles to the east. Will's northern boundary with Cook County is 1,600 feet to the north. So to put that in perspective, Interstate 355 is just outside of this aerial on the left. The applicant is operating a vet clinic on the adjacent parcel at 13731 Archer Ave., which is currently zoned C3, and you'll see that in a subsequent slide, which is a general commercial district, it was rezoned back in 2011. And it's a permitted use in that C3 district. The vet practice, as you can see, the aerials has been successful. It's outgrowing its current parking, and you can actually see cars parked along Coates Road just alongside that property. So the applicant purchased the adjacent property that's outlined in blue in 2022 with the intent to expand the parking and add a small addition onto the clinic itself. The subject property lacks municipal water and services, and it's not within a facility planning area. So it is served by well and septic, which would take up some of the property, and since there's an existing residence, there is well and septic that would either have to be reconfigured or the existing area would have to be abandoned with the demolition of the house and the accessory structures should they be removed. The site lies within the village of Homer Glen's planning boundary. And the property fronts, as you can see, Archer Avenue, which is a poor lane roadway. It's under the jurisdiction of IDOT and has an average daily volume of 12,400 vehicles, and that includes 875 commercial vehicles. So it is a busy road. Looking at the platte survey and the site plan, I did try to darken the site plan a little bit, but I can use my cursor to kind of outline. They are proposing a slight addition to the rear of the property, where the cursor circulate, or circulating. And then they are proposing an additional parking area along that northern part of the building that continues onto the subject property and adding a couple spaces on this side, again, to help alleviate the on-street parking that's occurring. In terms of meeting the C3 district standards, based on the platte survey, the property would meet those lot area and lot frontage requirements. So just looking at some photos before we get into the analysis of a map amendment criteria. This is looking at the existing parking lot and that vet clinic. This is looking along Archer Avenue from the subject property. This is looking at the subject property. Let me go back a slide. So this is looking from Archer Avenue towards the existing residence, which is on the right, the image on the right. The image on the left is the proposed area of the parking area. And you can notice too, in these photos, the existing vet practice, there is a residence that's actually going to be slightly to the south. That's just behind this residence when you look to the south, that I don't think I have a photo of, but you'll see it in aerials in the staff report. Yeah, so this is also looking across Archer Avenue, there are industrial uses. This is a motor vehicle repair, I think truck repair facility at Archer Avenue and Coates Road, if you're familiar. So moving into the map amendment criteria that staff and the county board and this commission evaluate map amendments by. The first two deal with the existing zoning districts and uses of the property in the area. Staff used a half-mile radius when looking at the uses in districts because it is a very developed area, and we'd be here all night if I analyzed larger than a half-mile. Pretty much, staff found the proposed use, the expansion of the clinic is compatible with the existing uses in the area. There's commercial along Archer Avenue. And in terms of future, you'll see it's going to be commercial. Within a half-mile radius, staff finds the zoning request is also compatible with the existing districts in the area. The districts include agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial. And that's within the villages of Homer Glen, Lamont, and Lockport, as well as the county. And you can see immediately adjacent, we have R2, which is single-family, we have I1, we have agriculture. We have R2, which is another single-family designation. And then we have C1, which is immediately to the west of the property that came forward a couple years ago to this commission. It is an office for a trucking company. There are no trucks parking on the property, it's just their office. And then we have the vet clinic on the eastern side of this property. So looking at the zoning in terms of just municipalities, you can see, again, they have residential, agricultural, some estate residential, and some general mixed-use commercial. In terms of the suitability, the property is currently used residentially. The dwelling and accessory structures are permitted by right. But the proposed parking lot and the vet clinic would not be permitted in an R2 zoning district. And it is bounded by commercial on either side. The trend, the property retains its original zoning designation. And staff has concluded that the development near the property is trending towards municipal annexation and commercial developments. And Lamont's comprehensive plan, which is the bottom right, is showing that they're even planning future commercial uses along the northern side of Archer Avenue within this area. So the property is called out on the image on the right with that yellow star at the very, very bottom of the screen, and that red that's adjacent to that yellow star is the commercial within Lamont. Homer Glen has an older comprehensive plan that shows similarly commercial across Archer, but also the area is pretty much maintaining residential developments, and this was from the early 2000s. So it's a little outdated. In terms of consistency with the county's adopted lean resource management plan, the subject property is within the suburban community's development form, and the neighborhood commercial development use concept, which is what we would classify the request as, is permitted. And a lease score was not calculated for this request. So of the agencies notified, none objected. The village of Homer Glen actually sent an email saying they have no comments regarding this request. The Northwest Homer Fire Protection District states that they want to see the plans when the permits are applied for, but they don't see offhand or initially any issues with the proposed expansion. The ECOCAT, which identifies protected resources in the area, did not find any. And the NRI or Natural Resource Information Report found that there's little to no effect on the property based on the proposed activity. With that being said, staff is recommending approval of the map amendment from R2 to C3, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. Is anyone any questions? Thank you very much. Are there concerned citizens or objectors to this case here tonight? You are a concerned citizen or objector? Okay, I'm going to hear from the applicant first, and then we'll hear from you, all right? May I hear from the applicant? Or whoever's representing this case tonight? Good evening, would you please give your name for the record?
My name is Chris Johnson.
Okay, Mr. Johnson. We have one concerned citizen, so I'm going to ask that you take a seat right over here, unless you have an initial statement that you'd like to make. And take a seat, we'll hear the concerned citizen, and we'll give you a chance to respond. May I have the concerned citizen come up? Please. Please give your name for the record.
Yes, it's Katie Mazes. And I live at 13750 Coates Road, Lamont, Illinois. And I am the neighboring parcel to this proposed zoning change, which is great because it does address the parking in the neighborhood, and it's a great veterinary clinic. The only concerns being that it wraps the property in all commercial zoning. Some realtors said it could be a potential issue in the future for a home sale. Who knows for that future portion? Really, my only concerns were that it's just going to be limited to what the current proposal is, and not further expansions around the property or down on that property.
May I ask, how much property do you have?
I believe it's .65 acres.
Okay.
And it's directly east to that blue boundary line, and then south of the veterinary clinic.
Share your northern boundary with the vet clinic now, and if it happens, you'll share the western boundary.
Correct.
Yeah. And Marguerite Kenny of our staff said that of the four communities that are within the mile and a half objection area, three of the four are saying that they expect to have commercial along that property. So what I'm saying is you probably won't be able to defend your position as a our resident or our zoned resident. So you may think, plan in the future for what you intend to do with your property. The possibility is you could even have it rezoned commercially yourself and sell it as a commercial piece of property. If you want to stay there for the rest of your life, that's, you're available to do that. Just know that you may have commercial properties alongside you on both sides. Just, it's just the way things go in the world. You know, it's not anything you did.
Yeah, and I wasn't asking to have it rezoned differently, it was more just that future expansion.
I could address, after you're done with the county staff, what kind of screening requirements they might have on your common border, what is required. Because as of now, you can see there's a lot of beautiful trees. And I would suspect that they probably don't have intention to remove them. But you are right, once it becomes commercial, 20, 30 years down the road, somebody else may do something different with it and remove the trees, and it may be a little more open to your property. But maybe the county will actually require something of them, we'll find out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you care to respond, sir? Up here, please. You don't want to respond? Okay, that's fine.
No, I think I'm okay.
Okay.
Well, I would just ask him a question.
Yes, sir.
So the county has said that you plan on putting in some parking, and there's a residence there, what is going to happen with the residence that is there? Do you have plans with it?
Well, the residence would be torn down.
It would be taken down?
Yeah. And, you know, when we originally approached my neighbor, and just for the record, the house that you just were, was that, well, the house that Katie was talking about was my house. That was an original lot, all at one, it was all one lot, and we subdivided it and built the house back there, okay? So the whole thing has been through a little, it's been a little convoluted, but you know, we got hemmed in by the tollway expansion and Archer Avenue going from two lanes to four lanes, and it took a lot, I think it took over a half an acre off the front of the property. And so the availability of this lot to the west was kind of a blessing for us. And we only have the intention of developing the front half of it with parking. And I was told by the state of Illinois that they would not allow additional access or egress off of Archer besides the driveway that serves the residence and Coates Road. And so we we had originally thought about trying to subdivide that that lot to the west and try and get enough off to develop a parking lot and an addition. But I think it's going to take too much land and would require variances in order to achieve that, and
Yeah, they might require a turn in lane and all kinds of things.
Yeah, so I don't know if the parking lot plan stands as is because there is a drainage that kind of follows that dotted line or the dashed line that's between the two properties.
Yeah.
All the drainage that comes from everything to the south flows down the road there and then over to Archer. And during heavy rains, that floods, and I haven't had a site engineer look at it yet, but that's one of the things we're going to have to address before we come up with the final parking for that area. But as Will County requires, there is going to be screening and plantings for landscaping to shield it from the residents, so.
Okay, so that is required, and you will be doing that?
Oh, yeah.
Adding what needs to be done?
Right, right.
Are there trees between the property required and that neighbor? Is it a line of trees there now?
There is a fence, and there are some trees, but nothing that goes to the ground.
Whole thing.
You know, yeah.
Interesting, so you originally built the house straight south that she lives in?
Correct.
Soaved it off?
Yeah.
So whoever bought that at one point knew the vet clinic was there and lived. But now you've been, your hands keep getting tied every time the highway expands and your business expands, so.
Yeah, they were going to move the business, and I, you know, I mean, it's either they move the business or we expand, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Anybody else have questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. I think I don't need to ask staff to take them at his word that county would require some screening.
Well, I would like to get a motion on case ZC-25-104 slash M-25-016.
Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion to approve
Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to take a motion to approve case ZC-25-104/M-25-016 for a MAP amendment from R2 to C3.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Roger Buttonhausen?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Chairman Houston?
Yes. Our next case tonight is case ZC-25-109 and S-25-042. And we have Kelly Krasinski will be presenting the case tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. So this is ZC-25-109. The owner is Chicago Land Trust Company or Trust with Michael Bugler with having 100% interest, and he is also the agent for the case. The owner is seeking a special use permit for light equipment sales and rentals to allow used cars sales from a unit within a building. And the special use permit will apply to the entire site. Here, the property is outlined in red. The subject property is located in New Lennox Township. The village of New Lennox is located about 700 feet east of the subject property. The property was planted as Lot 8 in the Cedar Industrial Park Phase 1 subdivision in 1978. The property is currently approved with two buildings and has an existing landscape business and motor vehicle repair on site. Here, the subject property is shown outlined in red. And the subject property is owned I-1 and is surrounded by other I-1 properties to the north, east, and west, and then is abutting an R2 property to the south. Okay, I forgot to add the cloud, so I can show that later. But the light equipment sales will require one parking space per employee and then also two parking spaces per service stall slash bay. Based on what the site plan showed, there will be four parking spaces for the used cars and then three spaces for employees. This will comply with the requirements. And they also indicated that there will be about space for about six cars and doors. Based on their application, the use will be open Monday through Friday, Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This is the view looking west along Ford Drive. This is the view looking northwest across from the subject property. This is looking north across from the subject property. This is looking east along Ford Drive towards Cedar Road. This is looking southeast at the budding parcel. And then this is looking at the subject property. And this is looking at the more rear building on the subject property where the use will be located. So the special use was reviewed based on the criteria outlined on the screen. A more detailed analysis can be found in the staff report. But for a summary, staff finds that these use would not be detrimental to the local area. The applicant anticipates operating a low customer volume dealership as the applicant states they expect to see up to five customers per day. The proposed use is located within an industrial park. Other uses within the industrial park include repair shops, outdoor storage, towing businesses, alarm system companies, storage rentals, and contractor yards. Light equipment sales and rentals is a less intensive use than the other industrial-related use within the industrial park. Staff finds that the use would not impede on the development of the area. The subject property is already approved with two buildings, including like an office building and an industrial building. And then based on the application, they anticipate having about one employee and five customers per day, which can already be accommodated by the existing parking lot. And lastly, staff finds that the special use shall conform to all the applicable regulations of the I-1 zoning district. Of the agencies notified, there were no objections received. This case did go to the Village of New Lennox Board on November 10th. And their staff did provide a letter with a list of recommended conditions. These conditions can be found in the memo that was provided. Lastly, staff is recommending approval of the special use permit with two conditions. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Would you know by chance whether the people who are establishing this business are the owners of this whole property?
I believe so, but I believe there is somewhere, someone to speak tonight that could confirm that.
Okay, thank you. Because New Lennox is recommending striping, paving, all kinds of things that only the owner could actually provide.
Yeah, I know the owners, they did attend those meetings. And I believe they are okay with most of those conditions. I guess it's more, some of them, it would be hard for us to enforce. Like, for example, like number five is remove everything that is not associated with the business on site within six months. That'd be kind of hard to determine what's exactly associated with the business. But, yeah, but I think they're open to discussion on adding some of those conditions, though. So if you would like to, they are open to it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Are there any objectors or concerned citizens to this case tonight? There are not. May I hear from the principal or the agent, Michael Bugler? Good evening, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Michael Bugler.
Yeah. I almost pronounced it right. I thought.
Pretty good, I thought.
You, I presume, have seen this New Lennox recommendation?
Yes, I have, yes.
Okay, is any of that within your home, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. In the spring, we're going to replace the parking lot. We intended to do it anyway.
Okay.
It needs it, so.
So you'll follow their recommendations as much as possible?
Yes, yes, uh-huh.
We're not going to require that because our county people have given us two requirements, and that's what we're going to ask for.
Okay.
But it's always easier to get along with your neighbor than it is to fight with them.
Yes, definitely.
New Lennox is a big neighbor to fight with. So I just wanted to see where you were in that position. We have no people here opposing you and a recommendation of approval from staff.
Okay.
So if you have anything else to say, you're welcome to. Otherwise, we're just going to go ahead and take a vote.
Well, that's good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
On case ZC-25-109/S-25-042, I would like a motion.
Mr. Chairman, ZC-25-109, S-25-042, approval of special use permit for light equipment sales rentals.
With two conditions.
With two conditions, yes, thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. May I have a roll call, please?
John Keefner?
Yes.
Roger Buttonhausen?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Chairman Houston?
Our next and our last case tonight is VXT-25-006 on zoning case ZC-24-109. And variance is VS-25-011 and 012, 013, and 014. And Marguerite Kenny, are you going to? You are? Okay. This was along the railroad by the New Lennox property. Yeah, this is just their asset for an 18-month extension, which is their first.
Yes, so I can briefly summarize. So this variance extension, you're actually voting four times. Two for the variances for the number of required mowings from five times to one time because there's two different parcels involved with the zoning case. And then again, two times for the variance for ground cover plant height from 13 inches to 36 inches for each parcel. So the applicant intends to construct a solar energy facility on the western side of Spencer Road, south of the CN railroad tracks and north of the Village of New Lennox Public Works. This commission approved it earlier this year in February and approved all variances with a six-to-zero vote. And the applicant has applied for the building permit associated with the commercial solar energy facility this past August. And the special use associated, as you're well aware, it takes about two years or they have two years to establish that use. So they have until February 2027 to get a building permit issued. However, the variances only have one year from date of approval. And the applicant is waiting for favorable planting conditions, which is likely not to occur until after the variance expire next February. So they are able to request an extension. The applicant submitted an application in accordance with the county regulations. And this commission is authorized to extend the expiration period for good cause on up to two separate occasions for 180 days each. And this would be the first extension request. If approved, the expiration date for all these variances would be August 16th of next year. So it would not kick in until the expiration date of the variances. So they're just ahead of the game. But again, knowing it's already, you know, almost the end of November, by the time they get the native pollinators planted and established, they need some time to do that, and it's not desirable at this point in the season. So staff is recommending to grant the extensions for the four variances. And I listed them out on the screen just to help you guys. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. Does anybody have any questions? No. Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this tonight? Is the applicant available? If you want to speak, you're welcome to. Otherwise, we'll just go ahead and take the vote. So it's up to you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
You can read it right off the screen and make it easier for us.
Yes, VXT-25-006. Do I got to go back to the original variance number, though? 25-011? Oh, there, it's up there. Okay, approval of variance for number required mowing from five times to one time for PIN 010, variance 25-014.
I have a motion, a second. May I have a roll call, please?
John Keefner?
Yes.
Buttonhausen?
Yes.
And Chairman Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, for VXT-25-006, item number two, approval of variance for number required mowing from five times to one time for the PIN with 020, variance 25-012 originally.
Second.
Motion, a second. May I have a roll call?
John Keefner?
Yes.
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
Continuing on VXT-25-006, item three, approval of variance for maximum ground cover plant height from 13 inches to 36 inches for the PIN with 010 ending variance 25-013 originally.
Second. John Keefner?
Yes.
Roger Buttonhausen?
Yes.
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 And to finish, VXT-25-006, item four, approval of variance for maximum ground cover plant height from 13 inches to 36 inches for the PIN ending in 020, originally variance 25-011.
Second. John Keefner?
Yes.
Roger Buttonhausen?
Yes.
Yes.
He's lost his whole evening, never had his case.
If, if we have any public announcements, or do we have any public comments? Okay, do we have any announcements from the staff?
If I could get a vote on the 2026 meeting dates?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, can I ask a favor? Can you read them off again? Okay.
There weren't any that fell on a holiday, though, right?
No, and if they were, we could always switch it, vote as they come about. But it is on the first and third Tuesday of every month.
Yeah.
Want us to pull it up? We could pull it up if you want us to.
Okay, it's January 6th, January 20th, February 3rd, February 17th, March 3rd, March 17th, April 7th, April 21st, May 5th, May 19th, June 2nd, June 16th, July 7th, July 21st, August 4th, August 18th, September 1st, September 15th, October 6th, October 20th, November 3rd, November 17th, December 1st, and December 15th. That's all of them.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do appreciate you.
The only one interesting there was we meet on St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah.
We'll have to wear our green.
It's all right. It's better than coming in, it's better than coming in wearing green beer, right? Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval of the dates so right into the record?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Okay, we have approval. And next, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, right. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same side? All right, all. Thank you very much. It was an interesting evening. I hope the 16th is not super hard. We'll find out.